Present and Mayor Zucker available via Zoom for the first portion of the meeting. Item three, pledge allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of application.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, reading of the minutes from the previous meeting held on June 17, 2025. Counsel?
Motion to accept the minutes and place them on file.
Got a motion by Austin, second by Veneman, to accept the minutes and place them on file. Motion passes eight A zero nays. Item five, presentation by the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. Welcome.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Stacy Kevey. I'm the President and CEO for the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber. I'm here just to give the biannual report out of some of the exciting things that the Chamber has done. So you already received the, the report that should be in your packet that looks like this. So I'll go over this briefly, but there were some additional items that have been finalized since I did this that I want to state as well. So, one of the things that we continue to do is talk and meet with businesses and hear about how it's going, what are their struggles or challenges, any concerns with doing business and what they would like to see in regards to community growth. So, as of the end of May, we've met with 26 businesses so far. The top challenges facing businesses were staffing, marketing, and competition, cost increases, and affordable housing, concerns with doing business in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, and the highest being, being open to change. So, meaning the community needs to have more of a positive commentary, competition of same industry, and then Eighth Street is a concern. And then what businesses would like to see in regards to community growth, they'd like to see business development, development of the downtown, more retail and restaurant options, and more recreational opportunities. So some of the things that are really exciting that we are working on right now is, we've compiled a list of short-term housing options for employers. So this was a request from employers that bring in interns and things from UW Madison and so on. I mean, it's very difficult to find short-term housing, so I've compiled a list, provided that to them. We also, part of our ACE Leadership, Adult Leadership Program, one of them did a project of starting a workforce hub, which will be extremely important to our employers. It provides what employers have internship opportunities, youth apprenticeship options, job shadowing, and so on. So we can start getting these kids into the workforce and understanding what they would like to do. It was not fully completed, but we're hoping that next year's class that can continue this project. But the, the initial survey was done. One of the most exciting things that I'm really happy to announce, because this has been a two-year-long project, this kind of talks about it in this handout that you received, is we are partnering with the SBDC to offer a entrepreneurial training program. So it will be held in the fall. It'll be two cohorts, one in the fall, one in the spring, in hopes to continue this. It's a nine-week course that essentially offers all of the things that a business owner would need to be successful, right? They talk about marketing strategies, financial projections, and then at the end, the completed course, they will have a completed business plan, financial projections, all of those things. After this, as long as they complete this program, we're currently working to utilize some old revolving, revolving loan fund, funds that we had. We're disbanding that because, to be honest, we are not a bank, and we've had situations in the past where some funds have gone, they haven't repaid it, and we're a chamber, we're not going to take people to court. That would just look absolutely terrible. So, we said, well, how can we still use these funds to help businesses? That's the whole purpose of this. So we're creating a grant program. It's going to be called Heart Tank Grants. And as long as they complete this program, because we want to ensure that they're ready to be successful as a business owner, or growing their business, we will offer the opportunity to present to a committee that we have formed and apply for a grant with us. So, they won't have to give the money back. We have put some of these funds into a CD to hope to, for it to be at least partially sustainable. So, that will also start in the fall. We're still working on finalizing some of the criteria and everything with that, but once that is finalized, you'll see that, I'm sure, posted on our website, our Facebook page. And I just received word yesterday that we already have seven people interested and have filled out the interest form in this program, which is excellent because we've just started pushing this out. Another item, the handout that you received is this. So, we, among a lot of other people in this community, were very much a part of the CEC conference, and we received the survey results back. And we thought, what a great way to highlight the amazing things that these participants said about Wisconsin Rapids. I think it's, it's harder for somebody who lives in it to see the amazing things that we actually have, and we heard nothing but just awesome things about our community. So, we put this little flyer together and have been pushing that out as well, to again, just start engaging in the positive commentary and what our community does have to offer. So, I'll stop there and see if there's any questions at all.
No questions?
Anything else that you all would like to see when I come back next time?
Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Item six, consider a possible action on a resolution to approve borrowing for the amount of $725,000 from the Board of Commissioners of Public Land State Trust Fund for the purpose of financing roadwork and associated application for state trust fund loan. See attachment three.
Sure. Part of it, Alder Person, Katnaugh has agreed to read the resolution in its entirety. And this is basically, we, if you remember last, or last month, the last month's meeting, we approved the intent to apply. So this is the official resolution application to submit to the state trust fund loan for the, for the borrowing. The following preamble and resolutions were presented by myself and read at the meeting. By the provisions of section 24 dot 66 of the Wisconsin statute, all municipalities may borrow money for such purposes in the manner prescribed. By provisions of chapter 24 of the Wisconsin statutes, the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands of Wisconsin is authorized to make loans from the state trust fund to municipalities for such purposes. Municipalities is defined by section 2460, pair two of the Wisconsin statutes, means a town, village, city, county, public inland lake protection, and rehabilitation district, town sanitary district created under section 60 dot 71, 60 dot 72, metropolis, sewage district created under section 200 dot 05, or 200 dot 23, joint sewage system created under section 281434, school district or technical college. Therefore, it may be resolved that the city of Wisconsin Rapids and the county of Wood, Wisconsin, borrow from the trust funds of the state of Wisconsin as a sum of $725,000 and $0 for the purpose of financing roadwork for no other purpose. The loan is payable within five years of the 15th day of March preceding the loan is made. The loan will be repaid in annual installments with an interest rate of 550% per annum from the date of making the loan to the 15th day of March and thereafter annually, as provided by law. Resolve further that there shall be raised and there is levied upon all taxable property within the city of Wisconsin Rapids and the county of Wood, Wisconsin, a direct annual tax for the purpose of paying interest and principal on the loan as they become due. Resolve further that no money obtained by the city of Wisconsin Rapids by such loan from the state may be applied or paid out for any purpose except financing roadwork without the consent of the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. Resolve further that in the case of the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands agrees to make the loan, that the mayor and clerk of the city of Wisconsin Rapids and the county of Wood, Wisconsin, are authorized to empower in the name of the city to execute, deliver, the commission certifies indebtedness in such form as required by the commission for any sum of money that may be loaned to the city pursuant to this resolution. The mayor and clerk of the city will perform all necessary actions to fulfill and carry out the provisions of chapter 24 of Wisconsin statutes and these resolutions. Resolve further that this preamble and these resolutions and the A and A vote by which they were adopted be recorded and that the clerk of this city forward the certified record along with the application of the loan to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands of Wisconsin. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Katnaugh to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
And the associated application, if you could just add that to your motion.
Amendment motion to approve the resolution and the associated application. And I'd just like to note, outside of the motion, that this is for the road construction. It's for financing for road construction. In previous meetings, Tim has talked about it, but essentially, this is going to be a better rate than if we bond our typical way. So that is the reason we're going about it this way.
Still second with the amendment? Great. We have a motion by Katnaugh, second by Veneman, to approve the resolution with the associated application. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Move to vote. Motion passes eight A zero nays. Item seven, consideration and possible action on a resolution approving an amendment to the project plan of tax incremental district number seven. See attachment four. And I believe we have Pat on? Phil? If we have questions.
He's still there. Phil, are you?
Tim, did you want to kick it off?
I think, I think Phil's going to share his screen with us and kind of go through the project plan. But, you know, obviously, we had, last Monday, we had a joint review board meeting and a planning commission that approved the resolution. This is amending our downtown TIF project plan to include the, the projects, the major projects. There would be the Jackson Street project and the Second Street project, and also there's, with the railroad, what is that? Joe?
The predictive mobility rail optimization.
So, so with that, Phil, we'll walk you through.
Yep. Can anybody hear me okay? I'm not able to see anyone. Can you, first of all, can you see my screen, which has the project plan on it?
Yes.
Great. All right. Thank you. I'm going to, since I don't have video of the council chambers, if there are questions along the way, feel free to interrupt me. First of all, Phil Costin with Ellers, and thank you for a long meet to attend virtually tonight. I was there, as Tim indicated, last week for the initial meetings. We are looking to amend the TID number seven project plan. This would be the second amendment. Last week, Monday, we held the organizational meeting of the joint review boards. All the taxing bodies get together. We went through the project plan with them. No real questions came out of it. Substantial questions came out of it. Then, Plank Commission held a public hearing. We had nobody there to speak in favor or against this amendment. So it was approved unanimously by Plank Commission and forwarded on to your meeting tonight for action, if you're comfortable with the project plan as has been prepared. If it's approved tonight, it does go back to the joint review board for final action that is scheduled for July 30. And we had that scheduled for 3:30 PM on July 30. That would be the final action before it's submitted to the state. So with our project plans, what we tend to do is to make sure that we have an executive summary. And the executive summary kind of lays out some of the key issues, and I'll jump into some of the numbers. But as I indicated, this was created back in '05. It's the downtown district, as Tim indicated, TID number seven. And it was really created as a blight elimination district, enabling the city to look at development and redevelopment within the boundaries and within a half mile of the boundaries. And initially, it was created to install public improvements, promote development and redevelopment, and really to increase tax base and preserve employment opportunities in the city. It was amended. The first amendment added project costs for the river, river wall, park, bridge lighting, and park enhancements. And this second amendment now is really to look at bringing in two additional projects, really three projects, that will be considered. Two other projects are just outside the boundaries of the tax increment district, but within a half mile of the boundary. So they are allowed to be incorporated into the project plan and brought in and paid for out of the TID fund, as opposed to being paid for out of the debt service levy, or water sewer, any other type of fund, general fund of the city. The new project costs are about 2.7 million. 2.4 million for the East Jackson Street project from Bridge to Grand. That's roughly 2.4 million. Second Street North, Jackson to Baker is about 200,000. And then the railroad optimization project is 117,000. That's within a half mile. And that really is the, the city's share of the grant that has been received for that, for that project. So, they are all, if they're approved, eligible to be paid for out of the TID fund. And I'll go through the cash flow in a little bit. This is a very mature TIF district. And while you have, you have had approval for up to 30 million in project costs, you're going to be far short of that when the district is, is fully completed. Some of the projects were not done. And so, I'll go through that a little bit. This district has stayed open for up to 27 years. And right now, this plan allows for us to create, to amend the district and still pay for these projects, closing it out two years earlier than that full 27-year life. Now, there's no requirement to close it at that point. If there are other projects that have been previously approved in the TID plan that you still want to do, you have a little bit of time to do that, but that window is closing. So you can, you can create districts for up to 27 years in this case, but your expenditure period, the, the period of time where you have the ability to spend dollars out there is really five years from that maximum life. So, you have a little bit of time left here to undertake projects before we hit that five-year window, to take on a few more projects, including the ones that we're talking about, being brought into the project plan at this time. We've included a map from the original project plan. This is not changing. Again, we're not changing the actual boundaries, but we're just adding to new projects being brought in. And because we are looking at half-mile radius projects, we do need to actually identify specifically those projects in the project plan, along with showing the location of those projects. And I'll show you that map in a little bit. So the two projects, again, that are outside the boundaries of the existing district, but within a half mile, are in the middle of the page here, where it says projects outside the tax increment district. Again, it's infrastructure improvements, the East Jackson Street, and the railroad optimization project. So those are the two projects that are just outside the boundaries of the district, but again, can be paid for if they are approved as part of this amendment. Here's a map of the half-mile radius. So, it clearly shows that this is Jackson Street here to the, to the south, and of the existing, south and a little bit east of the existing boundaries. You can see where that, that project takes place. You can see also where the Second Street North project is. That is within the boundaries, but a new project. So the projects fit within that half-mile radius, and we, again, we need to show that to the DOR once we wrap this up. So we've done a little bit of extensive work on the, on the cash flow, the project costs that have been done, and the development assumptions to kind of build this out. We have the original plan, projects identified in this first column. The projects that were, were added as a result of the first amendment. And then down here, we actually show the half-mile radius and this amendment's project. So here's that roughly 2.7 million. The two projects that are half-mile radius projects are shown here. And then the Second Street North, Jackson to Baker Street project is also included, because that's a new project. When it's all said and done, you know, there's a little bit of time here yet, but we're probably going to be looking at somewhere around, about seven and a half million in total project cost spent, maybe upwards of eight, unless you take on some of the other projects that were in the original project plan or the first amendment. Again, you are allowed up to roughly 30 million, but you're not going to get to that point, just because some of the projects just did not occur, or did not occur at the levels that were, were being discussed back in 2005, and when the first amendment took place. So, from a development side, you can see what has transpired in this tax increment district since the beginning. We get some fluctuations in valuations, which is not unusual, given the, the fact that we have a lot of commercial property and industrial property in this area. So, you can see that we're at right now, about $22.2 million. In about two weeks, we'll learn of what was built in '25, or what value changer was in, sorry, in 2024, and we'll be able to plug that in. But that information, is it going to be released in the DOR until about August 2nd, August 3rd? So right now, you're at $22 million, and that essentially is what we're using to kind of build out the cash flow. We're not anticipating any new development in the tax increment district. If something happens, that's wonderful, and it may allow you to close the district a little bit earlier. But here's the 22 million, construction year 23, value 24, and that's generating about 458,000. We are showing a drop in value in the overall tax increment district, and that's really a reflection of what we've been seeing statewide, where we have seen kind of a shift of value from commercial and industrial properties to residential. You're not alone. We see that all over the state. So, you know, just to be a little more conservative in our cash flow, we are reflecting a slight drop in the overall value, and that essentially diminishes a little bit of the increment available to pay existing obligations and the new project costs. But even with that more conservative estimate, what we're reflecting here is, if you go all the way to the far right-hand side of this page, we have annual balances, more importantly, cumulative balances, and when the district is looking to be able to be, generate enough revenue to close out, which is 2031. So we are projecting at that point, you'll be able to close the district out again, unless you decide in the future to take on some of the other projects that were in the project plan. But right now, this reflects your existing obligations. It reflects the payments that is, are being projected for these new projects that we're, that we're adding, the three projects that we're adding here. That's what this reflects here, and nothing further. If I go back real quick to the project costs that were laid out, sorry, I'm going to jump around here. But if you look at the project costs, there are a few project costs that are ongoing. I wanted to reference. The river wall maintenance project is about $1 million. That's still going to be spent in '25 on that project. That is reflected in the cash flow. So we do reflect that in here to make sure you understand that that's been incorporated into here as well. So, even by adding new project costs, we do expect there to be enough, on a conservative revenue projection, enough revenue to be able to close the district out two years early, and have those projects paid for out of the TID fund, as opposed to another fund of the city. There's a couple of kind of remaining items that are required to be identified in the project plan. We're not annexing any property in this area. We expect about less than 35% of this overall area to be devoted to retail business. We know there's always going to be zoning changes of individual properties that, if there are redevelopment or developments that occur, and this area obviously fits within your comprehensive plan for what we're doing. So, again, I think really kind of good news that you have enough cash flow to be able to absorb these new projects. Finally, one last thing I'm going to just touch on, and that is, where a project isn't fully going to be paid out of the TID fund. And these are the three projects, again, that we're adding, the East Jackson Street project. While we're paying for almost 2.4 of that, the total project cost is another $624,000. That, that's the portion that's not being paid out of the TID. The same with the Second Street project and the railroad optimization program project, which is really being grant funded. We have to identify. So, the majority of those projects are being paid for out of the TID. There are, there's a small piece of each of those that will hopefully come from the general levy and/or utilities. So that's a relatively quick summary of the project plan, the amendment. Again, we're not changing boundaries. It fits within your existing cash flow. You're able to close the district out early, and it allows you to take on a few projects that, you know, using TID funds, as opposed to kind of where you would typically pay for those projects out of your general fund. If you have any answer, any questions? Anybody has?
Any questions from council? Hearing, hearing none. Do we have an action on this item?
Motion to approve the amendment to the project plan of tax incremental district number seven.
Motion by Austin to approve, second by Tim? With no other comments? Moving to vote. Motion to... Motion to approve with eight a's, zero nays. Coming back to the streets.
All right, great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Phil. Discuss and consider a process for appointment of a municipal judge to fill the vacancy which will be created due to retirement of Judge Peter Caston Holt's effective September 30th, 2025. We have a few options with this, which was emailed on Monday. Sue, would you mind running through the? Thank you.
So by state law, the council makes a temporary appointment to fill the vacancy, and then the council orders a special election. And then whoever would win the special election would serve the remainder of the term, and the term goes through April 30th of 2028. In the event that we, that you didn't have as much time to, to fill the vacancy, there is a statute that allows the chief judge of the district to appoint another municipal judge to, to act until the special election. But I think, I'm assuming since you have a couple of months that, that, that you will make that appointment. Otherwise, if for some reason you don't, then there will be an appointment of a municipal judge and then, but you still would have to do a, have a special election. The special election, well, let's, let's get first to the temporary appointment. This person would need to be licensed to practice in the state of Wisconsin, to practice law, must be 18 and must be a city resident, which would be the requirements for an elected How you choose that temporary appointment is up to you. In the past, when you've had elected official vacancies, you have, you know, put a notice out to the public that you're, you know, looking for someone to fill the position, and then depending on what materials you want that, those, those people to provide to you, whether it be a resume or a letter of interest. And then you could interview those people or have, have them do a short presentation during the council meeting. It's really up to you how you want to handle that and make that appointment. And then, as I said, there would need to be a special election at some point, and it would basically be, because of all the timelines and the statute, the earliest it would be, would be late October 2025. And that's if everything gets going right away and you decide, you know, that you want to, that you want to do the election as soon as possible. Otherwise, you know, there is a spring election in April, on April 7th of 2026, so that, that special election be, could be concurrent with, with that election. You can't have a special election after February 1 because there's kind of a blackout period there. So really, you're looking at between late October 2025 and February 1 of 2026. If you do the April 7, 2026 primary election date, then all of the dates for all of the other spring elections in terms of the nominating papers and when things are due and when the primaries and so on, then that would just kind of follow that. Otherwise, if you wanted to do it as a standalone special election, because there aren't any, there isn't a November election this year, then that would, that would be a separate election, there would be costs involved, and we would have to then set dates for nomination papers and so on and go back from whatever that date might be. And there might be a primary if there are more than two candidates that wish to be on the ballot or that have qualified for the ballot. So that would need to be taken into account.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to express my appreciation for Judge Caston Holt's years of service to our city. As we look ahead to this transition, I understand the council has the authority under state law to make a temporary appointment until a special election can be held. However, I want to respectfully, respectfully share concern about the council making this appointment directly. While I recognize the appointment is temporary, the position of municipal judge holds a great deal of responsibility and influence in our justice system. Excuse me. It's a role that, in my view, should be decided by the people, not appointed by elected officials. I strongly believe in the democratic process and feel that the public should have the opportunity to evaluate and elect the person who will serve in this important role, even for the remainder of the term. Holding an election ensures transparency, promotes public trust, and upholds the independence of our judicial system. I ask that the council act with restraint and allow the election process to take the lead in filling this vacancy. If a temporary appointment is truly necessary, I urge you to keep that appointment as short as possible and to set the special election date as early as legally and practically possible. Thank you.
So being that he's retiring September 30th, the earliest special election we could have is what day, Sue?
Late October. Early November.
Okay. Late October, early November. So would being without a judge for that period of time cause any?
Well, the, the, as I stated earlier, the, the chief judge of the administrative, judicial administrative district could appoint another municipal judge to perform the duties, but that says until the governing body fills the vacancy by temporary appointment. So I think this assumes that there's going to be a temporary appointment, and then there's going to be a special election. I guess that's what the statute says. I guess if you would just rely upon the, the chief judge making, designating another municipal judge up until the time of the special election, I guess that could be possible. I mean, this is basically presumes that there would be filled by temporary appointment, and then there would be a special election, but I, I'd have to look into that. I-
So if, if we don't appoint someone up until a special election, the chief judiciary would?
Right.
Either way.
Right. If there's a vacancy, there will be a vacancy on October 1st. So if there's a vacancy and the council has not appointed anyone to that position, then the chief judge will choose another municipal judge to, to basically perform the duties of that office until the vacancy is filled. And this says by temporary appointment, but arguably what could also be by special election. I guess I'm not sure whether you have to do a temporary appointment before a special election, or if you can just rely upon the judge to have a municipal judge and then, to appoint a municipal judge, and then you just wait for the special election. I, I would assume that would be okay.
I guess what I'm getting at is if anybody's going to appoint a temporary judge till a special election, I would hope it would be the elected body of the city and not someone outside of it. So if there is going to be an appointment either way, I think that we should do it. But I also think that we should call a special election as soon as possible.
I kind of agree with both of you, actually. I mean, I understand the, the election, but I think as a body here, we can probably appoint somebody for a few months. My thought is have Jennifer accept the applications. We take a look at them. We bring people in to do a short interview or presentation on their, their skills or whatever it may be. Make, make an appointment at that point and then wait till the general election in April and do it all then. I think that then gives the people a choice, but until then, we make a, an appointment, and we don't have, need a special election, which costs money to do. Just wait until April for that.
Any other comments? I have a question. Is the, when we say special election, there's a little bit of a confusion for me sometimes where it is a special election because that person was not anticipated to be on the ballot until a certain amount of time. If that person is on the, goes on a ballot that we plan on having in November, and they're not the only individual on the ballot, then is that still, could we still have a special election in November and not have the only individual on the ballot be the stretch?
There are no elections scheduled this, in odd-numbered years, in, in November. So this would be the only, between now and April 7th, there are no, no elections scheduled. So anything would be a special election, and this would more than likely be the other, only thing on the ballot unless for some reason there's another vacancy somewhere in the city that you're in the same vote and you want to have it on the same day, or there could possibly be the, the same issue happening in a school board or a county or something where they want to have a special election for something. But it would be pretty rare to have that. So, and even, and even if it is in April, it is still, I think what you're getting, it is still a special election because that's, that's not the date that that term would normally be, you know, up for election. So it would still be considered a special election, but you're just having it concurrent with the spring election.
Losing track of my ears. So we have November, October 2025 would be a, the only thing on the ballot unless other vacancies come up or other things happen to come in, then that would be the only thing, or we wait until this April, and then that position would be added to an existing ballot. Okay. Mr. Kettner?
I was just going to say that out loud. So if we do hold a, there's, there's two problems with the special election when there's nothing else, else on the ballot. One, we have to pay for it. Two, it's low voter turnout. And I think that an appointment, I mean, we can talk about that separately, whether it's this body or the, the chief judge. But I think putting it on an April ballot would, would draw on high voter turnout, higher voter turnout than if we just have it on a random day in October. So I think April would be the way to go for the special election because there's a current election, or there will be a current election happening. And then I still am on the, the side of, in the meantime, the elected body appoint that position and not leave it up to a chief judge to put someone in.
Is there a projected cost to having a special election outside of the April date? Something, a ballpark number?
I don't have a ballpark number. We've, the only special election that we've held recently outside of that date was for a, it was just in one district, so it, it wasn't the entire city. So our, the scheduled elections, most of the setup and the, the printing of the ballots and all of that is paid for by the county. If we hold a special election, all the costs for that election fall in the city. So I would have to run some numbers for you because I don't, again, I don't have those numbers offhand. And you also might have then a primary, which would be another election that we would need to pull costs for. So would you like me to do that?
Yes, I would. I'd, I'd like to put some dollars to that. I mean, we're, we're simply saying it's going to be costly, but we don't know how costly. So I'd, I'd like to understand that. Secondly, I've, I've gone on the record before, appointing somebody to a position, be it for a month or be it for, I think we're talking about potentially seven months here, does provide that individual, I feel, an advantage when it comes to that elected position. So this body choosing a municipal judge, you know, and potentially offering them an advantage when it comes to election time because they have experience, doesn't leave a very good taste in my mouth, and I, and I hope everybody understands that. So to me, if we have to appoint somebody, it should be for the shortest amount of time possible as not to provide any advantages and to make the election fair. That's my two cents.
No other questions? We have a motion on this item?
I guess one more thing, if nobody else is going to talk. When it comes to, to interviewing the potential candidates, I mean, what are we talking about? Are we talking about council members being on that, on that board? I, I mean, I don't know how many of you have professional experience with municipal judges and, you know, what they should know, what their education level should be, but I don't think there's many people on this council that, that, that have that experience. So I'll leave it there.
Make a motion to hold this item till the next common council meeting when we can discuss the exact cost of?
Yeah. So shall I say that?
We can't really hear you when you're not speaking into the mics.
Motion was to hold it until the next common council meeting, when we have accurate numbers of what a, an election would cost. And we've got motion by me, second by Palus, and a comment by Kettner.
Yeah, one, one point, though, holding it over to all the things that have been talked about, it does delay any plan to have a special election any sooner because we, we do have a certain period of time that we have to call it and then allow for circulation of nomination papers and all the other election notification and setup to be done. Jennifer, can you go over that quick of what that is? Is it 60 days?
I don't know what the timeline is for a special one. Sue, do you, do you know? That's something I'd have to look up.
Yeah, it's at least 62 days, but not more than 77. If it was in the spring, can't be earlier than, well, in November 18, but no later than December 30.
Okay. Well, back to my point, I don't, I don't think holding it over a month goes towards what Mr. Austin's saying, which is getting someone in there as soon as possible, or on the other end of appointing someone or going through the process of appointing someone and then having a special election in April. So I don't feel like holding it over to find out how much it costs is going to benefit either of those ideas. So I'll be voting against this, and I hope that if it fails, we can take some action on this tonight, one way or another. So I'll be voting against this, and I hope that if it fails, we can take some action on this tonight, one way or another.
Any other comments before we move to vote? Yep. All right.
Oh, tie.
I'm here.
All right. Since it's a tie, four As, four Ns, we'll, and we don't have a tie voter presiding over the meeting, we will bring this back and look for an alternative motion.
I'll make a motion to have the common council appoint an interim judge effective October 1st, 2025, and call a special election for that position in the April 2026 election.
That was a motion by Catna for the council to appoint. Okay.
Okay, got it.
Motion by Catna to appoint, for the council to appoint the municipal judge and hold a special election in April 2026. Pennscover. Any comments before we move to vote? Let's vote.
So the last vote ended in a tie, which means it did not pass.
So can...
Are you withdrawing your motion?
If we vote to hold a special election in April of 2026, can we also have the chief justice appoint the position? Did I understand that correctly?
Right. They would appoint, I guess, until you either made a temporary appointment or until the special election.
Okay. I'm...
Which, and when you have to pay that, have a contract with that person, it's not that they would get the salary of the judge. It would be whatever they charge. So I'm not sure what the cost might be for that.
So we don't have the cost for an election, we don't have the cost for an appointed judge?
Well, no, because it would depend on who the person appointed, and then that person could say, well, this is what I want to do this. So yeah, not knowing who the person is, I can't say what the cost would be.
Ryan?
I know some of you won't like hearing this, but to me, this isn't about cost. It's about transparency. So, I mean, if the cost of a special election this year, October, November, whatever it may be, is the issue, you know, I think we've spent money in worse places, if you ask me. So I would be in favor, and I'll make a motion that the council, the council appoints a municipal judge, but, you know, having a special election as soon as possible after that appointment.
Got a motion by Austin for the council to appoint a municipal judge and hold a special election as soon as possible after the appointment. All right, second by Pluse and floor to Mr. Veneman.
I was going to say that after we just had two deadlock votes, now we have another motion. One advantage to waiting until follow, until next month, we would actually have nine people here. That's a thought from my part.
Mr. Catna?
Yeah, I was just going to ask for clarification on the motion that states the special election as soon as possible and what, when that would be. What is, what is as soon as possible? Does that mean as many days as we, from when we call a special election to what is required? Or does that mean when it is convenient? I don't, when is, when is as soon as possible? What timeframe are we looking at? Are we looking at October? Are we looking at December? If that question is directed at me, I would defer to the clerk and the city attorney.
And I'll refer, I'll defer to the city attorney since I don't have that information with me.
I have it in front of me. I was just going to add that, I'm just looking it up under the state statute. It sounds like when a special election is called, not less than 62 and not more than 77 days. So 62 would, in my opinion, be the soonest, right?
Right. But you'll have to do an order for a special election, which isn't, right before you right now, that's what you're deciding. So probably August 19th, I'm assuming, if, depending how this goes, you will have an order for a special election, and then it could be between 62 and 77 days from August 19th, which is, I think, why I came up with late October, early November.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Catna? Are you done?
I guess, I mean, the motion is, I would prefer that the motion have a date on it, just for clarification, but it doesn't have to. That's just my preference.
I don't know that we can put a date on it, especially considering there could be primaries, right?
Well, you could have a date for the special election, and then the primary is four weeks in a special. I think it's four weeks previous to that. Then you kind of go back, and then nominating papers are before that. So, I mean, assuming, yeah, we'll need to know what the order for a special election is going to say for next council meeting. And assuming that you meet on August 19th and you want to order a special election, then, you know, that date can be 66 to 77 days from that date.
Floor to Mr. Pluse. Mr. Veneman?
I just want to go on the record. It said, I'm not in support of this. It's nothing to do with cost. I'm in support of a lack of turnout for a special election. And we have enough town to fill in April elections when we have other items on the ballot. It's, the turnout in town is obviously pretty small. I just, I'm not in favor of having a special election for this one position that could possibly, we talked about people deciding, it could possibly be decided by less than 100 members of the community or that, you know, so I'm just not in favor of that.
Mr. Austin?
Election turnout numbers are pure speculation at this point. And I would say it doesn't matter to me if it's 100 or if it's 1,000. If it's the residents of this city making the decision, that's what matters to me.
Sue, 62 days from, you're saying, August 19th? If that's when we do the order?
62 days, 62 days from the date of the order.
Okay, so assuming that we would have an order next council, August 19th, 62 days would put us at Monday, October 20th, and 77 days puts us at Tuesday, November 4th.
I mean, I'm not saying that this could not be decided next month, but I just needed, we just need to know whether you, you know, want us to bring back an order for next month. I guess if you still, you know, figure out between those days, but knowing that then the earliest date of your order is going to be August 19th, if that's passed. And then, like Jennifer said, the dates would be between October 20th and November 4th. So I guess we can put whatever date we want in the order, but... And it's, it's kind of crazy because you can't do it, you know, there's only like a whatever, how many day window to do it. And so you're kind of anticipating that you're going to do an order and then counting the days. So, but we need an order that has a date on it, and that can be presented next month, and that date could be decided at that meeting.
All right, we have a Mr. Catna comment.
I'm just going to say one more thing. We have our municipal judge retiring on September 30th, 2025, of which October 1st, we will no longer have a municipal judge. It looks like we don't know what we're doing here. I mean, there's been some options presented. The motion on the floor right now is going to be as soon as possible. We're assuming that during the short timeframe, multiple attorneys, I'm guessing, or other municipal judges, are going to circulate papers to get 200 signatures to get on the ballot. We're going to notify the public. There's going to be this turnout for this one item that might not even be on a Tuesday. We don't, we don't know when it's going to be, and we're potentially going to move forward with this tonight. I just think this is all a little crazy, and I think the fact that if we take this up August 19th, I mean, a month from then, we will be without a municipal judge. And one might get appointed by a chief judge. Do we even know who that is?
I'm not sure.
So, yeah.
It's a chief administrative judge. I know who it used to be. I'm not sure who it is now.
Okay. So goes to my point. We could take up, we could take up an appointment and call special election for a certain date, or we could just move forward willy-nilly like this. I'm going to vote no.
Just to clarify, the motion that's on the table is to appoint a position and then take up a special election as soon as possible, which would be, bringing this back October 19th with a potential date of November 4th. No other comments?
August 19th, it would come back?
All right, let's have a vote.
And the date isn't necessarily November 4th?
Correct.
We have to, yeah, okay.
There's no official date in the motion.
Okay, tied again. Failed.
I believe that our only option now is to hold this over until next month and make a decision when we have a full council and the presiding mayor to break any ties. We've run through every potential option.
That's because the votes aren't displaying because it's a tied vote, and they're giving the opportunity for it to be, the tie to be broken, but we don't have anybody to break the tie. The mayor's on the line, but he's not presiding over the meeting, so he's not a voting member. So we don't know what the vote is because of the tie? Right. You sure? I mean, if you want to, if you want to announce your votes, you can do that. Can't you?
I call for a roll call vote.
Yep. Aye. Sure.
Nay.
Hi.
Nay.
Hi.
To know, we go back.
Motion to table.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to table the item.
Motion by Catna to table the item, second by Palm Quest. Comments? Let's vote. Motion passes seven As, one Ne. Item nine, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting held July 7th, 2025. Mr. Kern?
Yes. Thank you. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on July 7th. A quorum of members was present along with others identified on the meeting minutes in the sign-in sheet. The meeting was called to order at four PM. Item one was the approval of the report from June second. Motion by Tao to approve the report, second by Maruets. That motion carried six-zero. Mayor Zacher moved items six and seven up on the agenda. Item six was a public hearing regarding a proposed amendment of the project plan for tax increment district number seven. Phil Kossen of Ellers provided a summary. There was a public hearing at four nineteen PM. No one spoke in favor or against. That public hearing closed at four twenty. Item seven was consideration and possible action on a resolution approving an amendment for the project plan for Tiff District number seven. The commission had questions and discussed this item. Eventually, a motion was made by Austin to approve the proposed amendment to Tiff District seven. The second by Maruets. That motion carried six-zero. The next item considered was item two. That was a public hearing in action on a request from Catherine Landerholm for a conditional use permit to amend, or amendment to establish a hobby kennel at two oh one fourteenth Avenue North, which falls within the R two district. Staff provided a summary of the request and there was discussion amongst staff and the commission. The applicant withdrew the request. No action was taken. This was due to confirmation that the dogs that she was kennelling were under the amount required for the conditional use. Item three was a public hearing in action on a request from Thump Star Services LLC for a conditional use permit to establish a storage container at three two one fourth Avenue North, which falls within the M one district. Staff provided a summary of the request and approval was recommended subject to the conditions in the staff report. The public hearing opened at four twenty-eight PM. Speaking against or in favor were none. The public hearing closed at four twenty-eight PM. There was a motion by Austin to approve the conditional use permit, second by Tao, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion carried six-zero. Item four was a public hearing in action on a request from the city of Wisconsin Rapids to amend chapter eleven of the zoning code, Article six, division three, general standards pertaining to driveways, Article seventeen, parking and loading facilities, and Appendix E, general definitions. Staff provided a summary of the request. There were questions amongst those in attendance and the commission. A public hearing opened at four forty-one PM. Speaking against, Kevin Fangman. Speaking in favor, none. That public hearing closed at four forty-three PM. There was a motion by Austin to approve the request from the city of Wisconsin Rapids to amend chapter eleven, zoning code Article six, division three, general standards pertaining to driveways, Article seventeen, parking and loading facilities, and Appendix E, general definitions as presented by staff. Second by Maruets. That motion failed three to three. As were Zacher, Austin, and Maruets. Nays were Tao, Bailey, and Shifrell. There was another motion made by Austin to approve the request to amend chapter eleven of the zoning code Article six, division three, general standards pertaining to driveways, Article seventeen, parking and loading facilities, and Appendix E, general definitions, holding out the portions pertaining to residential driveways and auxiliary parking bays. There was a second by Tao. That motion carried six to zero. Item five was a public hearing in action on a request from the city of Wisconsin Rapids to amend chapter eleven zoning code, Appendix C, specifically the allowable height of residential accessory buildings. Staff provided a summary of the request. A public hearing was opened at four fifty-three PM. Nobody spoke in favor or against. That public hearing closed at four fifty-four. There was a motion by Maruets to approve the request to amend the allowable height of residential accessory buildings, second by Tao. That motion carried six to zero. Item six was adjournment. There was a motion by Zacher to adjourn the meeting, second by Austin. That motion carried six-zero. The meeting adjourned at four fifty-five PM, and I respectfully submit that for your approval along with the associated ordinance amendments and resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, what are your wishes? Motion by Tim.
Motion approved.
Approved. Second by Penscover. Any comments? Hearing done? Moving to a vote? Item passes eight As, zero Nays. Item ten, consider the adoption of actions by standing committees of the common council as follows. Ten As, Finance and Property Committee, held on July first, 2025. Ms. Katna?
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at five o'clock, Tuesday, July first, 2025, in the council chambers at City Hall. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, consider referral from Alder Person Palm Quest to review and consider terms and conditions for the 2026 Southwood County Main Society contract. No discussion or action was taken on this item. Item three, consideration and action on a request from the Park and Recreation Commission to approve improvements at Witterfield, specifically the purchase and installment of new baseball field lights at a total cost of $200,000. The project is proposed to be funded through a combination of unbudgeted parks and Witterfield Outlay Funds, along with a contribution from the Wisconsin Rapids rafters and the amount of $30,000 to be paid in annual installments of $5,000 over the next six years. Moved by Tim, seconded by Veneman to approve the motion. Motion carried three-zero. Item four, consider request from Rodeo Grill of Wisconsin Rapids LLC. Hector Pachetta, agent for retail class B intoxicating liquor license and retail class B ferment malt beverage license for the premise located at nineteen fifty-one A Street South. Moved by Tim, seconded by Veneman to approve the request. Motion carried three-zero. Item five, consider for approval temporary retail class B malt beverage and temporary retail class B wine license for Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish, seven fifty tenth Avenue South for the parish picnic event to be held on Saturday, August twenty-third and Sunday, August twenty-fourth from, 2025, from ten AM to five PM on both days. Moved by Veneman, seconded by Tim to approve the licenses. Motion carried three-zero. Item six, consider for approval temporary retail class B malt beverage license for Friends of Rapids Music Incorporated, three sixty-one Witter Street for the premises as outlined on the map, provided within Robinson Park for Friends of Rapids Annual Music Festival to be held on Saturday, September twentieth, from twelve PM to nine PM. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Tim to approve the license. Motion carried three-zero. Item seven, consider approval for a 2025 budget amendment, number two. Moved by Tim, seconded by Katna to approve the 2025 budget, budget amendment, number two, as presented. Motion carried three-zero. Item eight, art of the bills. Moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman to approve checks two six, one two six, to two six, four three four, in the amount of three million, eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Motion carried three-zero. Item nine, set next meeting date. Next meeting will be Tuesday, August fifth, at five PM. And item ten, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen dot eight five pair E, pair one, pair E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or the conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Moved by Veneman, seconded by Tim to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three-zero and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and strategy regarding renewals of emergency medical service agreements with Beeren, Towneport Edwards, Nacusa, Cranmore, and the Ho-Chunk Casino, which will expire on December thirty-first, 2025. No action was taken on these items. Discussion occurred. Item eleven, the committee adjourned at five forty-one PM. Moved by Tim, seconded by Veneman. Motion carried three-zero. And with that, I make a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion by Katna to approve. Second by Penscover. Any comments, questions? No adjustments? Move to vote? Item passes eight As, zero Nays. Ten B, Public Works Committee, held on July tenth, 2025. The Public Works Committee met Thursday, July tenth, 2025, in city council chambers at City Hall. All members were present. Others attending were listed on the sign-in sheet. Item one was called to order. The meeting was called to order at five PM. Item two, review the street and engineering monthly activity report. The reports were reviewed. Item three, review the 2025 construction project status report. The report was reviewed with an interest to continue reviewing on a monthly basis. Item four, discuss the Wisconsin DOT's Thirteenth Street South, A Street projects. The presentation was given on the overall project and the current state of the design. Item was discussed. No action was taken. A review, item five, to review and consider proposals for hydraulics and hydrology modeling in the Wisconsin River as part of the river wall rehabilitation project. Motion by Austin, second by Penscover to approve the proposal from R.A. Smith in the amount of $7,358. Motion carried three-zero. Item six, review and consider proposals for, for intersection control and design as a part of East Jackson, as a part of the East Jackson Street reconstruction project. Motion by Penscover, second by Austin, to approve the proposal from Strand and Associates in the amount of $130,000. Motion carried three-zero. Item seven, request from Nathan Flinders to consider extending the two-hour parking limit or no parking from nine AM to five PM for an additional 170 feet along Dale Street in front of NNN Auto Outlet. The item was reviewed, but no action was taken. This item will remain on the referral list. Item eight was to review the referral list. The list was reviewed. Item nine, set next meeting date. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August seventh, 2025, at five PM. Item ten, to adjourn. Motion by Austin, second to, by Palm Quest to adjourn. Meeting adjourned at five fifty-two PM. With that, I will make a motion to approve as presented. Motion by Palm Quest, second by Tim. Questions? Great, let's vote. Item passes eight As, zero Nays. Item ten, C Legislative Committee, held July first, 2025. Ms. Katna?
Thank you. Legislative Committee met Tuesday, July first, at six PM in the council chambers at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Alder Persons, Veneman, Penscover, Pollak, and Tim, city attorney Sue Schill, Mayor Zacher, and detective Cody Wedrow. Item one, I called the meeting to order at six PM. All members were present. Item two, discuss a referral from the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department for revisions to ordinances regarding drug paraphernalia and tobacco products and to create ordinances regarding marijuana, synthetic cannabinoids, and hemp-derived cannabinoids. Motion by Plouis, second by Palm Quest, to approve the ordinance as presented, which revises drug paraphernalia and tobacco product provisions and created provisions regarding synthetic cannabinoids and hemp-derived cannabinoids. Motion carried three-zero. Item three, discuss a referral from myself to change the city attorney position from an elected position to an appointed position. There was discussion, but no motion was made nor action taken. Item four was adjournment. Motion by Palm Quest, second by Plouis to adjourn. Motion carried three-zero and the meeting adjourned at six twenty-seven PM. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept these minutes.
Motion by Katna to accept, second by Penscover. Comments? Item, question? All right, let's vote. Motion passes eight As, zero Nays. Item eleven, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports are on file with the clerk and included. There are no questions regarding those? Move on to referrals to committees.
I have two referrals to you. One to the Legislative Committee regarding open container regulations in the downtown area of Wisconsin Rapids. And then the second referral would be the suspension of the two-hour parking in the one hundred block of Second Street South to the Public Works. Yep, I'll send them in writing.
All the other referrals will be sent? Great.
And I have a referral from Alder Person Palm Quest discussing creating or developing a citywide master sidewalk plan.
Item thirteen is adjournment. Motion by Penscover to adjourn. Second by Tim. There are no comments, let's vote. Item passes eight As, zero Nays. Meeting adjourned at seven twenty-seven PM.